Okay, good evening. This is the Lakeville Select Board enacting as the Waging Personnel Board as needed, September 13th at 6:00 PM at the Lakeville Public Library. Please ask if anybody's recording the meeting and announced that cable was taping it. So Rusty, you want to tape something or you all set?
I'm in the chat.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, first thing on the agenda is the selectman announcements. The Lakeville Lions Family Fun Festival will be held on September 17th, rain date, September 18th at the Clubhouse at 170 Main Street. There'll be food, kids, games, kids' games, pony rides, music vendors, and animal area. Our mission is free. There are still some vacant positions available on the Cable Advisory Committee, the Open Space Committee, Capital Expenditure Committee, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Energy Advisory Committee, and Zoning Board of Appeals. If you'd be interested in volunteering or serving on any of these boards, please submit a letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen by mail or email. Next is the...
I have one announcement if I may.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
This is to all of our Lakeville residents who are Middleborough Gas and Electric customers. Now's the time to apply if you're in need of energy assistance for the upcoming heating season. They're here to help. Fuel assistance is available for Middleborough Gas and Electric customers with household incomes up to $99,147. Lakeville residents should visit the website of cfcinc.org. I have asked the town administrator if he wouldn't mind posting this on our town Facebook page as well as our town website. This is just another way for Middleborough Gas and Electric to reach out to our customers, and I just want to make sure that you all know that the time is here for the winter season, whether we like it or not. Thank you, Rich.
You're welcome. You all set yet?
Yep.
Okay. Town Administrator's announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Handover announcements. First, the Fire Department has been awarded a $230,000 federal assistance to firefighters grant to replace out-of-date breathing apparatus. On August 31st, the Massachusetts School Building Authority approved the Assamwampset Elementary School renovation project. As you know, this project replaces the windows and exterior doors at the school as an estimated total of 4.2 million. MSBA will fund about 53% of the total, or as much as 2.2 million. An article authorizing the project is centrally planned for the November town meeting. Our contractor is scheduled to begin installation of the fence behind Loon Pond Lodge on Thursday. This project will improve the layout of the area above the pond and safety for guests attending events at the lodge. Cost is being shared between the town and Boston Tavern. The state's FY '23 budget included $25,000 to begin design work on improvements for the intersection of Bridge and Main Streets. This funding will enable the town to proceed with the traffic studies required by Mastod. As you all recall, legislature previously approved a bond authorization of 2.5 million to execute the project, however, those funds are not released by the administration, but at least will get being started. Paving operations will get underway this week on Montgomery Street and Long Point Road. Work on Montgomery Street will begin on September 14th, weather permitting, and the Long Point Road beginning on the 16th. We've been working with Plymouth County to obtain approval on our application for ARPA proceeds. As you recall, the board approved the town facilities water project back in June. The county's consultants challenged a portion of the initial application due to the presentation of the entire package as water sewer infrastructure. We agreed to revise the Old Town Hall restroom application to emphasize the public access and healthy neighborhoods aspects, and we've been told tentatively that'll work. We'll need the Select Board to sign the ARPA agreement for the next step. I think I've circulated to you all. The fire station reconfiguration is proceeding. The contractor will be in later this week to go over next steps. We've also brought in an outside project manager to assist with other facilities projects. Initial set includes the old library entrance, the outdoor stage cover, and the wall installation and the accounting HR shared space. The facilities manager recruitment's underway, and work on the Ted Williams Camp tennis courts will commence tomorrow. We've scheduled training and open meeting law for committees and staff for October 19th. KP Law will be providing the training, Greg Corbo specifically. There'll be two sessions at 4:00 and 6:00. I'll be reaching out to the committees. The training will be held here at the library. And finally, the next regular meeting of the Select Board will be on September 29th. We'll move different dates, Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Lakeville Police Station. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Ari. Okay, we have a number of things to go over this evening, and I'd like to move up one item. So these people from the Charles River Wheelmen, Wheel Men, it's going to have a race in Lakeville so they don't have to hang around for an hour and a half. So with the board's permission, I'd like to move it up after Town Administrator's announcements to discuss a possible vote on the public way to use the application from Charles River Wheelmen to use Lakeville roads on September 18th, 2022, for the bike ride. So that's item number seven in your agenda. Okay, somebody want to come up and just give a brief overview of the race itself so everybody knows what's going on?
Is she, is the...
You gotta go over here, please.
Yeah, I gotta go over there.
Yep, thanks.
I'm Larry Kernan, and I'm sort of responsible for this event. We also have Ed Chang, who's the president of our club. I first want to stress that this is not a race. This is a bike ride. It's a recreational ride. We'll have about 250 riders. They're going to be spread out over about a three-hour period, so we're not talking about masses or large groups of riders. They're very experienced riders and generally very, very well behaved. We've been... Just a little bit about CRW. We're a bike club founded in 1966. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3). Our charter is "Education About Cycling and Advocacy for Bicycle Safety." We're the largest road cycling club in New England with about 2,500 members. As I said, this event will involve about 250 members, and we never run this through Lakeville before, which led to a little bit of inexperience about the process, but I think we're here now. And we decided to come through Lakeville partly because we love Tamarack Park as a possibility for a rest stop, and we've talked to the Conservation Commission, which has approved that subject to the selectman vote. And if there are any questions, we'd like to answer them.
I guess the only thing that I would say, and I don't know if you, Lorraine and Leah looked at it, they're coming on Bond Street, and they want to take a left onto Hitching Point, Hitching, from Post Road, and then a right on Settlement Road, then take a left onto Main Street, instead of going down Bond Street to the intersection there of Clare Pond Road. And actually, I did talk to the chief about it, and he thought about it, and he said it's probably better to do it that way because the intersection of Clare Pond Road and Bond Street and Main Street is a very dangerous, you know, intersection. So he kind of agrees, you know, that's probably the right idea. So I guess the only thing, you know, we assume that, you know, you're going to clean up after your...
We commit to do that. We're very good about it, and we are bringing plenty of trash bags, so we will...
Okay.
We commit to that, or get back to me, and we'll make it...
That's very important.
Yeah, no, we understand that.
We've had situations where there's been a lot of trash, and it's been left behind, and we're just...
We'd like to do this again in future years, and we won't be able to do that if we're not clean.
So any of the board members have any other questions?
I just wanted to confirm. So they'd be taking a left out of the settlement and then heading down Main Street, correct?
Correct.
And so, just etiquette on bicycle, it's on facing the traffic?
That they ride with the truck.
With the traffic, okay.
They're considered a vehicle.
Okay. It's just that it's just a very busy road, and then taking a left at the lights, so all the riders would obviously have to stop before they took a left, you know, to head down to the park.
And we did consult with the police, and they determined that a, what do you call it, a detail was not necessary at that intersection, which we would have been willing to do.
Well, with experienced riders, and I'm sure that they know, you know, road etiquette. So I guess, you know, I'm okay, it's just, I just have concerns...
The point is, it's not a road race.
Right.
It's not like the big one we have here in town makes a big difference.
Will you have someone at these intersections, let's say?
No, we're not planning to. Many of the riders will ride with a group leader, not all of them. That's their choice. But we encourage less experienced riders to ride with a group leader.
So then when you're coming out of the settlement, taking a left, you have to cross the street?
Which we do at a lot of intersections, and they're used to that, being a road club.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that as opposed to the other... That intersection is one of our biggest accident intersections, so...
We don't want any...
Yeah, I don't want anyone hurt, you know, if we can avoid it, but that's a nice little uphill there going to Tamarack Park, so that's a good place for a water stop, I think. Goes downhill after, but it's still...
Okay, so let's take a motion to approve this... I'm going to say road race. I'm not going to say road race.
Bike ride.
Bike ride, thank you.
And I guess the permit, the public way permit.
On September 18th, 2022, at 8:00 AM, from 8:00 to 12:00, I guess.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have to sign that application, or is it just the chairman?
Just you, Rich.
Okay, I'll see.
And then we get to talk about it tomorrow? Is that how that works?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Unless you want to sign it now, okay.
You can initiate it now.
You want it now, no?
Sure.
No, I'm saying, do you want to give it to them?
No, I need to take it back.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the 18th, that's this weekend, right?
That's a Sunday, right? That's a Sunday, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, where are we?
Something better.
All right. All right, so I didn't remember three. Let's talk about the presentation on the Town Hall Fire Station feasibility study. Ari, do you want to give a little update of where we've been and where we are?
This is Jen Dos Santos from Socatech. Socatech was chosen as the OPM for the feasibility study. She provided an overview of the findings. As you will recall, this is a project that was funded in the FY '22 capital program to conduct a feasibility study on future disposition of the Town Hall and Fire Station and solutions for the space needs and facility needs of both general town staff and fire staff. The, just for the public's information, this has been going on, this study's been started last year for some time, gone into real deep detail regarding the needs. We had some general thoughts as far as test fits and things like that going with the site. It's important not to take too much from this in terms of the details of the facility itself because no design work has really been done. And at this point, it's really just a question of disposition and future plans for the site and for those functions.
Would it be possible to turn the lights down? Oh, is that where you're going?
Yeah, we can do that.
It might be easier for people to...
I'll get it, I'll get it.
Is the woman here?
I can go on there.
I tried to use the clicker. I don't think it likes me.
You can go to no?
I can go over to no, but I don't appear to be able to select it. I think Nate just went to get help. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, magic. Okay, don't touch the clicker then. Okay, thank you. Sorry. Okay, so, as Ari mentioned, my name is Jen Dos Santos. This is Rihanna Burton. We're from Socatech AE Consulting. We are an OPM firm. We were hired by the town to conduct a feasibility study of your current Town Hall and Fire Station building. I'm guessing most of you are familiar with it. This is it here. Also, as Ari mentioned, it was funded under the FY '22, 2022 capital plan, and a building committee was also assembled by the town. These are the members here who participated, as well as Rihanna and myself. So just a quick sort of background on the study and what we were sort of tasked with doing was evaluating the building, the conditions, and assessing the viability of three options. So these are the three options here. Option one is to renovate the current building to continue to serve as town offices, including consolidation of town offices that are located elsewhere. So all town offices and the fire station. Option two was to renovate the building to continue to serve as a fire station and construct a new Town Hall. And option three was to renovate the building to continue to serve as the consolidated town offices and construct a new fire station. So through the presentation, we're just going to give sort of a high-level view of the process and our findings. You know, it's not necessarily a granular presentation of all of the details. I think the study is available, but I believe there's some Q and A after.
So the first part of the process was meeting with the staff and the building committee to determine what the space needs were for the various departments, and to take a look at the existing building to understand what the existing conditions are. And we then used all that information, gathered it, to then inform our decisions on the possible options. Just, we included a few photos to kind of highlight some of these. There were, one of the biggest requests was the need for more storage and the need for some additional meeting space, both internal and possibly for boards and commissions. Right now, there's only the one conference room that's kind of used as a multi-use space, and storage right now is, you know, file cabinets kind of where we can fit them, in addition to in-office spaces. But there's, you know, very kind of limited room to grow and to continue to keep up with the needs with the, for the town.
As well as, one thing here just to add before we move on, this first photo here, I think, is, you know, fairly telling. The first photo is the accounting department and the HR assistance office, and I think you can kind of see from the photo that, you know, quarters are kind of cramped, and I think, you know, the town has experienced some growth, and in response, we've tried to, you know, make the best use of the space, and, you know, in response, you know, these are the types of things that have happened. And, you know, HR is a sensitive department, and, you know, kind of difficult to share an office with another space, with another department as well. So that's kind of a, like Rihanna said, that's a common, a common thing that we heard throughout the process.
Additionally, some other things that were noted, we wanted to look for a way to make it easier for the public to access different spaces of the Town Hall, and this included looking at how it's, we are currently able to access kind of the upper and lower levels of each floor. It's kind of a split level in the original pump house area. This is, the first two photos are on the second floor, just as an example, an original door from the pump house use, and the way to get from one level to another is only via stairs, and it's a similar situation on the first floor as well. So part of what we did was, we looked at how can we make it more easily accessible. We're also, we also looked at the IT room and how we can make the server room better. You can kind of see in the corner, there's two split units that are used to keep the server room cool. Modern server rooms need a very specific kind of climate control, so we are looking at that, and it's kind of indicative of the rest of the HVAC system in the larger Town Hall, kind of the impact on the airflow and the ventilation as retrofits and renovations have been done over the years. And lastly, we have a basement space that's used for a lot of storage, archival storage. We understand that town recently had a study done and had someone come in to help with organization to use the space more efficiently, but there's also been, it was also noted that there had been some water infiltration, lack of ventilation. So we looked at, looking at getting some better ventilation and doing some limited waterproofing to make the use, make the space continue to be usable. And we also spoke with the fire chief and deputy chief from Fire Department. There are quite a few, quite a few things that could be done to bring this up to more modern fire station standards. One of the biggest things that was noted was the apparatus bays are not adequately sized to handle the current vehicles. There's very little clearance between the individual vehicles, very little clearance and headroom when exiting the apparatus bays, and that has caused some damage, and so you can see from the photo on the right, can be difficult to maneuver, and with moving one vehicle out in order to get another out, it can, it can be a lot to kind of coordinate. We've also saw a, an example where they have hit the plume event before, which is something that is used to take care of the exhaust from the vehicles while they're in the apparatus bays. Still functioning, but a note of just how tight things are in there. And just this, the safety and the ease that fire personnel can get from, say, the second floor out to the apparatus bays when answering a call. Right now, the back stairwell is the one that's most used. Still a bit of a long way to go. Lighting is a little bit difficult. But ideally, and something that we looked at in the proposed layouts, was making it more easily accessible, making the apparatus bay, having the gear near the apparatus bay, making easy paths to be able to efficiently answer a call.
I think we all probably can imagine when, you know, firefighting personnel are, you know, trying to get to the equipment and trying to get out quickly in response to an event, of course, it can, it can be challenging to get vehicles out if you need to, if you have, in some cases, literally an inch on either side of the equipment to get one vehicle out. Sometimes they need to get one vehicle out just to access the one behind it to respond to the event, as well as the tight maneuvering space for people within the apparatus bay. Sometimes their clothing is getting caught on apparatus as they're, you know, moving quickly throughout the bay. There's a number of sort of safety concerns, both people, apparatus, and, you know, the community, because of course all of these things add time to the response time, unfortunately. Very tight quarters, is my point.
And also, as part of evaluating, for, in this example, the option one, looking at renovating the existing building to meet the needs of all the town offices and the fire station while remaining on this site, we took a look at the existing site conditions, and we did find some limitations that ended up leading to concluding that option one was likely not viable. Some of the limitations include the septic system. It would have insufficient capacity to handle the personnel of the current, like, who is currently at the Town Hall, all of the Fire Department personnel, and the additional town office personnel that's currently located at the old library, in addition to the request for additional meeting space. The location itself, the septic system is right behind the apparatus bay in the rear, so that would impact being able to extend to the rear. There is a taunton water line and a right-of-way behind and along the left side of the building that would need to be kept accessible, which would impact moving out that way. As we had said before, the apparatus bays are undersized, and it will take more than just expanding or adding on an additional bay, largely due to the height restrictions.
In the wood, three stretch.
In the wood. And would likely require having to demo the apparatus bay and build a new one that would be able to be more efficient. And the building is very close to Assamwampset Pond, which brings its own environmental considerations as well, especially to the, to the front of the building.
So once, once we realized that, you know, option one and that this site was not viable, we were asked to look at alternate sites, and there are two alternate sites that are already town-owned and were previously designated for public safety use. Parcel 1 and Parcel 2 here, they both are adjacent to the Ted Williams Camp. Parcel 1 is along Precinct Street and is just adjacent to the Council on Aging, and Parcel 2 is adjacent to the police station on Bedford Street. So as part of evaluating these two sites and their viability, we looked at the site and environmental constraints of each location, the traffic and traffic control requirements of each location, as well as utility infrastructure and setbacks and soil conditions for the, you know, potential installation of a septic system, of a new septic system of the new building. So as part of that analysis, it was determined that Site 1 on the Precinct Street side is the preferred location over Parcel 2.
So we are, from understanding the programming needs of all the departments and understanding what we're working with in the existing, we came up with some possibilities. What would be possible as a layout and adjacencies for using the current building for just town offices, consolidating everyone to one, one location? offices, consolidating everyone to one, one location? And a possible layout for a new fire station at the preferred option. This is just the current layout of the town offices, the fire department. It's a little difficult to see the colors, but fire department is more so on the right side of the building on both the second floor and the first floor. And town offices have the rest of the space and, and storage in the basement.
And that's probably more important anyways.
So this was a layout that we deemed to be possible, just to see how the spaces could fit together. Again, this was very concept level, just to see what would be possible. Some of the things that we looked at and considered were consolidating, making sure all of the town offices could be in this one location, some additional meeting and more flexible space, additional space for storage and archival storage, and keeping, being able to incorporate space for growth so that town offices and departments can keep growing to keep up with the growing needs of the town.
So just on this, what, what this shows here is, basically the exercise here is a, it's called a test fit. So this is just to show that the spaces, the consolidated town office spaces can fit within, within the parameter of the existing building. And some of the things to sort of note here is that we have shown an elevator. It is important, of course, especially in this, you know, level of renovation and in a town office like this, that it's, you know, fully accessible to the community as well as to employees. So there's an elevator and there's also some sort of accessibility components to account for the split levels. But just want to stress that, you know, the point of this test fit is to show that these offices can be consolidated and that the existing town hall can support that without demolition and a new addition.
And similar thing with the fire station. This was being able to see what size building would be able to fit and meet all of the needs of the fire department. It's included a larger apparatus bay to give adequate clearance between the vehicles and headroom and clearance from the doors when they're entering and exiting. We assumed the possibility of drive-through bays, which is something that's often included in modern fire stations, which would then help prevent having to kind of do the shuffle of the vehicles and they'd be able to respond quicker. We also wanted to keep the apparatus bay and the turnout gear and kind of the contaminated spaces separate from the living and working spaces, which is also something that's usually considered in modern fire stations. We incorporated a mezzanine space that's accessible from the apparatus bay for additional storage. And we have meeting space and dedicated bunk space to give more space, room to grow and keep those kind of living spaces separate.
And also just to bring the conditions to a modern, you know, fire station sort of level, I guess, if you will. Right now, there's, there's a number of challenges with the fire department. Obviously, we've talked about some of them, the space and the maneuvering. They also really lack an appropriate decontamination area. So if they come back from an event, they actually have to go through their, through their space, through almost the entire space, just to kind of rinse off. And there really should be a dedicated space for them to do that and keep that contained, like Rihanna was saying, away from the living area, the area where they, where they live and where they rest and, you know, have meals and whatnot. So there are sort of some, some basic, modern fire station considerations that don't currently exist in the facility. But again, similar to the town hall, what we're showing here is a, is a test fit. This is not a, this is not a final design. This is not a schematic design. This is a, you know, these are the spaces that, you know, we believe are needed for a functional fire station. Opinion of valuable talks. So on, before I change the slide, unlike with the last slides, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you the disclaimers before I advance to the slide. And I, and I do want to stress, these are, these are preliminary. This is a feasibility study and the designs that we've shown are conceptual. So I just want to make sure that you don't think these are, you know, final numbers. So our recommendation at the end of the feasibility study is, our, our recommendation is that we move to bring on a design team and proceed to schematic design. Now during the schematic design phase is when the, the actual designs are advanced from test fit to schematic design. I'll say it one more time. So through the design process, that's when numbers become more refined, both square footage and, you know, it's not just dollars, but this is when there's further refinement and further opportunity to, you know, dig even deeper than at the feasibility study level. So this is our recommendation for the November town meeting for schematic design funds. So the two columns here represent, the first column is the fire station, then the second column is the town hall. We're, you know, recommending, or I guess it's not necessarily our, our recommendation, but together with the committee, we decided that, you know, it really makes the most sense that there are two projects. So the two columns represent how we got to the schematic design level request for the two projects. So I do see some sort of squishy eyes. It's about 415,000. Is that what you're going to?
Could you possibly read off some of those numbers? They're really hard to see.
Yes, absolutely. So the, the bottom line, go ahead.
I was going to say, why don't you move up? Well, is there a handout at all?
Well, there is, and unfortunately, I left it on my desk, I just realized, but I can make it available. Yeah, of course. So the total combined request for schematic design that we're recommending is about 415,000. And that's divided up between the 214,000 for the fire station and 201,000 for the town hall. So the things that make up those numbers are the OPM, so, you know, someone like us, a firm like ours, the architect, some initial testing, initial phase testing, which is different for the two projects. So town hall would have some testing related to the existing building and the fire station would have some testing related to the soils, some geotechnical testing and that sort of thing. Some surveys and studies and then a small line item, $2,000 for legal and advertising miscellaneous costs.
When it says refined during design, does that mean?
Can we, first, finish the presentation?
Yes.
And ask questions, thank you. Sorry.
No.
You're well done.
Well, so there's just one other slide, but I think that, I'm guessing, can also be made available later. And then we just had a preliminary timeline, which just outlines a couple of the next steps, which of course is the November town meeting, where, like I said, we recommend the schematic design asked. And then we would move directly from town meeting, of course, assuming a positive vote, we would move directly to designer selection and then directly to schematic design. And then the hope would be that there is a schematic design option that can be presented at the spring town meeting.
I think a few things. First of all, the, this was a feasibility study committee, it wasn't a building committee.
Oh, okay. Apologies.
So the process, you know, would be that the next step would be that we ask town meeting to approve roughly $200,000 for design services for the fire station and I think 214,000 for town hall. That way around, close enough. So if that happens, then after town meeting, what would happen is that we would form a building committee for each one of those projects. Okay? There'd be a separate committee for each one of those projects. So that building committee then would be responsible to do, to put the preliminary design and so forth and so on, and then hire an architect, you know, to do those designs and come up with a, costs associated with what's decided, you know, by the building committee. Then it would go back to town meeting for approval and then we'd have to have an override vote for either both these projects or individual projects yet to be determined. So I guess, you know, the problem that the, you know, the feasibility study committee had was that if you're looking at today's costs, and I'm sure people today must have noticed that inflation went up 8.3% again on August, and the stock market went down 1,200 points today because of that. So there's been a 30% increase in costs, overall costs for a project of this size. You know, we went and we looked at Manapoiset, you know, fire station, which I think was built three years ago, I think somewhere in there, and I think it was like 11, 12 million dollars. Are we surprised about the cost for the fire station? No, I'm not. I don't think anybody should be because of the environment. Hopefully, the cost will come down. I am shocked about the price of the town hall. I, I don't think that the cost of the town hall at that kind of money is something that we can probably do, but that's yet to be determined. There's other options, you know, to look at, but the question is, the decision was made to use the existing building, you know, for the town office buildings. We just can't abandon it. But there is a lot of problems with that building and that needs to be addressed from handicap accessibility, and you can see there's multiple levels, you know, in that building. And so there's a lot of concern. All the mechanicals in that building have to be updated. So I honestly thought that it'd probably come into the five, six million dollar range, but we're just going to have to see what happens and play it out and look at different alternatives to try to determine to reduce the costs or not do it at all. But that's, that'd be a tough decision to make. But I think that the fire station is something that's badly needed and we looked at all the alternatives and to have a standalone fire station on Precinct Street, you know, is the right thing to do. Comments from the board, please?
I just had one question for the feasibility study. When you were looking at the options about utilizing the current space, you know, for town hall and fire station, what were your findings when you looked at, you know, possibly going up a second level above the bays to create additional space, you know, for, I don't know, showers, locker rooms or, or anything like that? And then possibly, I understand, you know, the layout, and I'm glad that you had put that picture in the, the presentation, because it does give us a really good visual as to what the layout looks like for the land around it. You know, there, we had just, you know, with our police station, we had put an outbuilding, you know, for the vehicles. And I had heard that there was some discussion that possibly, you know, we might consider something like that for our larger equipment, freeing up some of the bays to, you know, create additional internal space. So what were your findings when you looked at that type of an option?
So, so a couple of things. Where do I, where do I start?
Zone A.
So one of, one of the biggest things that inhibits development at the current town is the environmental factors and the septic constraints. The current septic system is appropriately sized for the, you know, number of personnel. But if you were to try to expand the personnel or add any additional meeting space or try to consolidate your town offices, then you would have a septic system that was undersized. And unfortunately, the one that's there has, you know, it received several variances to be installed where it is. Also, to build up on top of the station would not really resolve the issue of the openings, of the apparatus bay openings. They're really very undersized, both from a width standpoint and a height standpoint, which quite honestly, we see, we see a lot. You know, firefighting apparatus has really gotten a lot bigger over the years and a lot of towns are finding that their fire stations are undersized and it's not, it's not quite that easy to, you know, just make it bigger. And to build on top wouldn't resolve that issue. You'd still have, you'd still have bays that were undersized for bringing apparatus in and out.
I understand that piece of it. But if we were to consider, you know, an outbuilding, you know, for the larger, you know, apparatuses that we could, you know, build so that it was, you know, conducive to the larger engines than, and use the bays for the smaller engines, you know, reconfigure it that way. So we wouldn't have to, you know, change the size of the bays that are in current. I understand the constraints and, you know, with, with the septic, I, I mean, I'm certainly hoping that our, you know, board of health might have weighed, weighed in on this, you know, as well, with regards to the septic. You know, because, you know, we hear talks that, you know, it could be an issue or it's not an issue with the, the amount of people that are currently in the building. Because we did have our, you know, building inspectional services in the current facility, you know, along with the fire. So if, you know, if that was taxing the septic, then, you know, maybe we should have been looking at the septic at that point. But, so if it's not changing the, the number of people in the building, other than, you know, considering maybe meeting space, I'm thinking it might not be an issue, but.
I'll just, actually, the board helped it weigh in on it, Lorraine, and they said that they will not support any waivers to expand that septic system. And the septic system would have to be upgraded and a significant cost to do that. And the primary reason is because across the street is Assamopset Pond, which is a zone A and DEP will not allow the waivers as well. So it would increase the usage, you know, in that building and it just can't, can't, can't be done.
I know from, you know, from my perspective, you know, my personal goal here is to make sure that our, you know, fire emergency services, you know, have the facility, you know, that can be supported for the, the work that they need to do and that it is in better condition, obviously, than what it is right now. Because we all do know that it is, you know, in rough shape. And at the same time, you know, balance the financial piece of it with our residents. So I know it's a, you know, a lot of work went into this. You know, I spent all weekend reading the feasibility, you know, from start to finish. So just wanted to make sure that we here are exploring all options available. Because I, you know, I have concerns that the building is Because I, you know, I have concerns that the building is so old that once we start to go inside and start to do renovations, we don't know what we're going to uncover.
I think that's a good point. The, the point is that, you know, you know, over the years, what they've done is, you know, put this here and that there and modify this and so forth. I mean, you got accessibility, you know, problems. I mean, you only have, there's no accessible bathrooms on the first floor and on the second floor. And you know how difficult it is to get that building, you know, multiple levels, you know, and different floors and so forth and so on. And it's just not an easy solution. We knew the Town Office building is going to be a challenge. But to try to say that we're gonna put the fire station in the same location, you know, as the Town Office building, it just doesn't work. It just doesn't work at all. You know, in the outbuilding, if you're talking about an outbuilding, I mean, you got everything. It's not fair to the fire department, you know, to have to go from one building down, down the whatever. It has to be, you know, air conditioning, it has to be heated, and there's all kinds of problems, you know, associated with that. So I mean, that really was not even a consideration. And the consideration was, was to try to get all the town employees back into one building, you know, and that's why we put them over to the library. We renovated that facility to move inspectional services over there and the Board of Health Services, and that's been good. But it would be nice to have everybody in the same building. So maybe when you look at this, we say, okay, we build a new fire station and we do something different at the Town Hall and we keep the Board of Health and Inspection Services all with the old library. Not that that's the best scenario, but I mean, that's a good possibility. But I, I, I just don't see how you would go about, you know, putting a second floor on. I don't think is, is doable at all. And then, you know, some type of outbuilding, but, you know, that, that whole thing, it needs to be completely done over. And, you know, you can use the bays as office space and so forth, which is the most economical way. You know, like I said, I, I didn't think that the cost of the Town Hall would be as much as what preliminary is being proposed here, because that doesn't make sense to me either. And I don't know how we get people to support that. You could build a new Town Hall for those kind of numbers. But there's so many issues with that building, especially the mechanicals and the electrical, the air conditioning, the furnaces, everything associated with that building has been put together piecemeal, you know, over the years and something that needs to be addressed.
And I agree.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, Larry, you can go.
Just two things. First of all, I think it's important for everyone in the public, in order to understand the purpose of schematic design. For relatively short money, we'll be able to really dig into some of the issues, some of those that you mentioned and you've mentioned, Mr. Chairman, in terms of feasibility of the building, the strength of the building, also the suitability of the site that we're looking at. And so it'll just, it'll just also advance things forward. There's no debt involved in that. It's strictly free cash and it's just, it's just to bring things forward so we can make a more informed decision come next Town Meeting. Certainly, I think this should be kept in mind, which didn't get mentioned during the presentation and didn't get talked about today, is the suitability, long-term, of that site, of the site, current site, for public safety response. You know, there's been at least one occasion now, and maybe two, the past 15 years, where the site became inaccessible due to flooding. It's a, it is very close to, it's, it's, it's a very vulnerable location to the kind of flooding that we see out of the pond now and then. And, and it's not really, I'm saying these things that probably Chief O'Brien would be saying if he was able to be here tonight. And it's probably not the, an ideal location when it comes to response to all areas of the town either. So it does bring you a little further from the southern part of town, which is closer to the northern part of town, which frankly, there's more development anyway. So I just think there's a couple of things to keep in mind.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Larry. So this, that picture is online right now for anyone who wants to see it. The whole packet actually is online. It's in part one, so all that information is right there for anyone who wants it. And it's page 73 out of 119 on what's posted.
It's posted separately.
Yeah, it's posted separately under the selectmen section. But it is, there's two, sometimes we have to break it up because the packet is so big, so that's in the first, the first part of it. Second of all, I sat in a meeting today for two hours talking to the water folks, the water suppliers of Taunton, the water suppliers of New Bedford, and they would have a big problem, you know, with us. They don't want anyone being, building in near a zone A, so why would we keep giving ourselves variances if that's what we're asking of everyone else not to do? So I, I just have a hard time. I feel like keep, if we do try to fix the fire station there with an outbuilding, and it's something that I've been thinking about, I've thought about it for a couple of years, I, I believe the part of the building that would have to be built is the most expensive part of the building anyways. So now you have two-thirds the cost with all your mechanical problems and the original building still, still there. And now you're, you're multi, you're multiplying, you know, services as far as you need the, what do they call that?
The climate event.
The climate event in one section, you need it in the other section. You need decontamination in one section, because I'm not gonna ask our firefighters if they're the furthest away to walk through this fire station, through this other fire station, to get to the decontamination room when, you know, and when you see some of these newer fire stations, the way they're laid out just makes absolute sense, not just for their quick departure to come and, what do they do? Save our lives, right? But also for them to come back in and, you know, clean up. I mean, we all know it's in the forefront now, how many, you know, firefighters have different types of cancers and everything else, and that's the biggest thing. We need to give them, you know, our town is growing. It's not a small town anymore. And what we had 20 years ago was perfectly acceptable for the town, but we have bigger buildings, we have apartment buildings. I, I can't say enough about the fact that we need a brand new fire station. As far as the Town Hall, that's definitely a sticker shock. And I, I think we need to either do a schematic so we can really, you know, hash that one out or, I don't know, just delay it, but.
I think it's important to understand, this is a needs assessment. Me and I had this conversation with Mr. Chairman, this is a needs assessment and that, that, that vision for Town Hall is an all-in soup-to-nuts.
Right.
Full and situ renovation. And frankly, there's a whole lot of contingency put in there because we don't know what the design looks like. So I, I, I think the prudent thing to do is proceed with the schematic design, but know that we're gonna have to keep the numbers down.
Yep.
And be very, I'm sorry. Apologies. And be very careful about the way that we, that we move, that we move forward on that. I think, I, I certainly understand that it's gonna be a very tough and impossible pill to swallow, talk about a capital program between the two projects that's, you know, getting close to $30 million, it's not gonna happen. It's just, it's just not gonna happen. So, and nor should it with the town of our resources. So, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out.
I just want to say one further thing, Lorraine, about the, the next step is going to be is to hire an architect to look at the requirements and the schematic designs for the fire station and hire an architect to do the same for the Town Office. There's no consideration being done to look at other options as far as the building is concerned.
So it's this one and this one?
That's, that's the way it's being presented right now.
Okay.
And I, I mean, if somebody wants to change something different, but I, I don't, I mean, I don't see how you can do that, but we can do that, if we want. But we gotta make that decision because we're going to Town Meeting and saying, we want $214,000 for the fire station, we want $200,000 for the Town Hall and decide what we want to do. Without that, we can't do anything further.
No, I understand that piece of it.
Very well.
All right. Anybody got any questions out there? Steve, can you come up here, please? Thank you.
I just have a quick question about the Precinct Street. Why is that site preferable to, adjacent to the existing police station?
Uh, no, Mark, you said, so the, there's the traffic pattern on Bedford Street, that's why it's a sort of a higher, higher speed area. And so to build there with the, with firefighting apparatus, we would likely need to install some type of traffic controls. You know, it's different than a police station where the, you know, cruisers are, you know, patrolling the town, whereas firefighting apparatus comes in and out of the one building in an event. So that was one. There's a number of environmental factors over there. There's a perennial stream that runs through the site. The whole site is in a national heritage.
Priorities.
Priority species habitat.
Thank you.
It's also in a no-septic zone, all but for a very small, there's a small sliver of the site that is not, but it's not a sufficient size to support a septic.
And the road on Precinct Street is sufficient to handle the, the size of fire engines coming around the corner, say onto 79, after 79 is reconstructed?
So the site actually at Precinct Street offers, it also offers greater flexibility in terms of how the station can be sighted, it can be positioned on the site to account for that.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Of course.
Anybody else have any questions? Nope, I'm sorry.
Do we do the name and address thing?
Yes, please.
Brenna Donahue, Crooked Lane. So just out of, when it comes to the Town Hall meeting, we're voting on, what was it? The architecture?
The design and services.
Not the million.
Oh, God, no.
Okay. If it did pass in the future, what would happen to the old buildings?
I'm sorry.
Like if, if all the Town Hall employees were in the new Town Hall, let's say that passed, what would happen to like the old library and things like that?
Well, the plan for the old library, when we decided to renovate that, was to give it to the Historical Commission so they could have an office space and have meeting space as well. That was the plan.
So it would go to the Historical Commission?
Yeah. That's, that was the discussion. We have, nobody's made that decision yet, but that's what we talked about.
That was a discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Okay. I'll set up a webinar first. Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Now you can't get it off. Next on the agenda is to update the MBTA Communities Program and state affordable housing requirements. There's been discussion, including our own board, from other boards, you know, getting clarification on what's gonna happen with the new guidelines for the MBTA Communities Program and then talk about the state's affordable housing requirements. So Mark Ratzek, Town Planner, please.
So the MBTA Communities Program was started a couple of years ago, well, it was legislature passed the bill a couple of years ago requiring that the State Department of Housing, Community Development issued guidelines for creating zones for high-density housing around transit stations throughout the Commonwealth. And those guidelines were released last December. We discussed those last winter. The state had those open for public comment, in which many cities and towns and organizations presented comments. The original plan would have been for Lakeville to have to provide zoning to allow up to 750 housing, multifamily housing units by right within half a mile of the train station. Based on all the comments they received, they've reissued a final set of guidelines, which are a bit different than what was proposed in the draft guidelines. They now have four types of housing, I mean, four types of transit communities, and we are now called an adjacent small town. It appears, although we haven't received any direct communication from DHCD, it appears that they are counting the Middleborough train station because that will be the regular commuter rail stop in the future, not the Lakeville one, as the main commuter rail stop here. So we are adjacent community small town based on our size to that. Therefore, we no longer would have to provide the same number of housing units as had previously been identified. So we have to provide now 5% of our current housing stock, which comes to 231 units. We don't have a minimum land area requirement that we have to rezone, that we have to rezone to allow still for multifamily housing by right that complies with the 15 units per acre density requirement as, as the previous requirements, guidelines had. They've added some clarifications to, to what that means and what we can require. So besides the 15 units an acre, site plan review can apply to the review of these multifamily housing developments, although they're, they have to be by, by right, not by special permit. You can have affordable units required as part of it, 10% for regular housing developments and if you can apply to DHCD for a 40-yard district, if you so choose, to have 20% affordable. But you have to go through the regular 40-yard review and approval process. So that's kind of, they, they just held the first information session meeting last Thursday. That webinar is actually on DHCD's website, as are the slides from that presentation. So if anyone at home wants to watch it, it's available. As time goes on, they will have future presentations about some more of the details of the guidelines, the implementation, as well as there are requirements that we have to follow. We have to present, submit to DHCD an action plan by the end of January of next year, so a few months from now. Although that's kind of like an outline of what, how we're gonna comply, how we feel we're gonna, the process we're gonna go through in order to comply. And being an adjacent small town, we have until December of 2024, I believe, we have two more years to comply with the, and create the zoning. So, so we do have some time, although we need to, and there will be grant opportunities if we need to apply to, for some assistance in putting together a plan, so.
Anybody got any questions on that piece?
Can I just?
I'm sorry.
I know, Mark, you said as of, as of right, three or four times?
Yes.
Can you explain for all of us what as of right means? I'll read it. Hold on. "A multifamily zoning district must allow multifamily housing as of right, meaning that the construction and occupancy of multifamily housing is allowed in that district without the need for a special permit, variance, zoning amendment, waiver, or other discretionary approval," which means that gives our planning board and our zoning board less say, correct?
Well, it gives it less say than a use, that's, you would need a special permit for it. That's correct.
Okay.
You know, many uses in the town are by right, but if you're building something new or changing the use, you do require a site plan review, which this would be required to follow through.
Okay. So what are your plans as the planner for Lakeville to put together the action plan that would be due by the end of January?
So the action plan is only a few pages long. It's more, a little bit more involved than the information sheet that we provided to DHCD in, in May, which was kind of the very first step that they required. But, so basically, it's, it's just, it's some additional information about the community and why we're a small town, with some overview on our housing stock and kind of a work plan, our timeline for moving this forward, so, which will develop over the next couple of months, so, as, as we kind of look into this. These guidelines, final guidelines were just released a few weeks ago.
Was there any input about what we've currently done with regards to, you know, some of our housing, our high, high-density housing that would fall into supporting the requirements for this particular?
They haven't, you mean such as the multifamily housing that we have adjacent to?
There's a few of them that have popped up around the area as well.
Right, yeah, so, so high-density housing, multifamily housing that we have in other parts of the community really aren't what they're looking for. What they're looking for is cities and towns to create the opportunity for new housing. Doesn't mean that they don't like the fact that we've done certain things and we've gone through proactively a 40-yard process and everything else, but we still have to create the opportunity for these additional units. Now, it doesn't mean that they're definitely going to be built. CBS might be on the corner for, you know, another 50 years and they may not go away, even though that area might be part of the area that we rezoned for multifamily housing. So it, it doesn't necessarily mean that, I mean, but you couldn't rezone, let's say there was a big area of wetlands, rezoning that and trying to count that as your area wouldn't be approved. They, they are going to review all of the areas as well as the text of the zoning to make sure it complies.
Because that's the part that is of interest and confusion to me, where, you know, we need to create the opportunity.
Right.
So that's, I would assume that we have to identify an area in which this opportunity would exist.
That's correct.
But as, you know, Leah had mentioned, you know, as the by right, there wouldn't be a zoning change. So we, would we have to go through?
Yes, we, we would have to adopt a zoning bylaw that would allow for this multifamily district, whether it's probably going to be by an overlay district, maybe part of it might be an additional 40-yard district. Again, it's something that we would go through the planning process to, to try and identify the best locations for that, that would be acceptable to DHCD.
Now, does it have to be one area or could there be multiple areas that would be designated?
So from my reading of the guidelines is we could do multiple areas, but they need to be a minimum of a five-acre size, so they don't want scattered little pieces, so.
And it has to be within a certain radius of the Middle Borough Station, correct?
Yeah, generally it's within a half a mile. Now, they, they can approve other areas, but you would have to.
Show why we couldn't do it within the half a mile?
Exactly.
Okay. I know, that's been very helpful, thank you.
Okay, the next pieces we wanted to talk about.
The next piece you wanted to talk about a little bit was, I think, about the safe harbor.
Yep.
Because there's been a little bit of discussion about that recently. So, safe harbor for, is a term that references your ability to, to not approve 40B projects, kind of as a, regardless of whether the project meets all the standards or not. So if, if a community has more than 10% of affordable, permanently restricted affordable housing, you can not approve and not accept, you still have to accept the application and hold a hearing, but you can not approve it if you are greater than 10%. The other way is if more than 1.5.
Can I stop you there for one second?
Yep.
Can you tell us where we are on the?
So we're at 6.5%, and that number is probably going to go down once the latest census figures are calculated into our, with our existing affordable housing inventory in Downper, so.
So in order to get to the 10%, we're talking hundreds of houses?
Yes, we have to create more houses, that's correct. And so, so and the way to calculate those numbers is basically if it's an ownership unit, you count just the ownership unit, and if it's in an apartment complex, you can account if, I believe it's 25% of the units are affordable, you can account, count all the units within the apartment complex. So currently we're at 6.5%.
No, and I want people to understand that we're not even close to the 10% number.
That's correct.
People keep saying, we're going to get to safe harbor, we're not going to get to safe harbor anytime soon. Because as you add, you know, more houses, the number of houses gets added to the total and then the percentage is probably going to go down instead of not up.
If you don't keep up by adding a proportional amount of affordable units, your number's going to go down as your housing stock increases. That's correct.
Okay, second.
The second way of being able to absolutely say no to affordable housing developments is to have 1.5% of your land area of the community covered with affordable housing developments or have, or, or be able to calculate affordable housing unit land area. So the land area of affordable housing developments or units, because depending on the type of unit, it gets calculated differently, that total land area has to exceed 1.5% of the total land area of the community that's allowed to be counted. So for the total land area of the community, we are approximately 23,000 acres, which 1.5% would be 340 acres, would be 1.5%. But out of that 23,000, we would be able to subtract water bodies, so we have a significant number of water bodies, public lands, and we have a significant amount of public lands, particularly around some of the ponds, certain wetlands and a few other excluded types of parcels. So roughly, I'm expecting that our number will kind of be somewhere in the 200,000, I mean, 200-acre range as far as calculations. Over the next few months, I'll, as time allows, I'll try and refine that number and I'll send, send the board a memo on that. I have done, so I have done a little quicker analysis, a little bit more in-depth analysis of the land area, a calculation of the land area that would be counted for affordable units. So basically, if it's a for-sale unit, they count like the footprint of the unit plus reasonable yard size in the front and rear yard. If it's a apartment complex, generally they count the area around the apartment complex land area. So unless it's some vast expanse of peace and then they will cut it off. But, so our conservative number is, is about 43 acres of land. So we're not anywhere close to that 1.5%. So I will try and refine these numbers and, and send the board a memo on that. And the third way of, and it's more of a temporary safe harbor, is to approve a large number of units, I think it's up to 2% of your housing stock. And then you get a temporary one or two years, depending on the number of units, safe harbor if you have a valid housing production plan. So, so right now, in the last few years, we haven't approved any large numbers of units, so we're not eligible for any safe harbor.
Okay. Just one other question, there was mention that, by one of the planning board members that said, you know, that limit the, the project to 200 units, okay? That's true, but what they can do is they can just subdivide that piece of property and they can put 200 units in each lot.
Yeah, yes, so, right, for, for different, I mean, so if someone had a large piece of property and they wanted to do more than 200 units, they could divide it into two parcels and they could do a 200-unit development and then they could do a separate 200-unit. So we could then claim safe harbor for a year or two. Of course, it'll take them probably that long to build it out because you start with your safe harbor at the time of the approval, once it goes into effect. So by the time they build it out, your safe harbor will expire and they'll be able to permit the second parcel, so.
How big is that parcel?
Well, I mean, it's whatever you can fit on 200 units and get approval for within the community. I mean, so, I mean, so generally it could be a 20-acre parcel. Typically, you see four-story buildings because of building code requirements. They can build them at a, it's a little less expensive and the building code's a little less restrictive if you do a four-story building versus going higher. So many of the large complexes you see are groups of four-story buildings to get to 200 units or 250 units, whatever the number is based on the size of the community. And based on our size, it's, it's 200 units.
So that, on that 20-acre parcel, 200 units?
Mm-hmm.
But then that person could subdivide it to two 10-acre parcels and then put 200 in each one? I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that, too.
So if they had, if they had 40 acres and they were able to divide it into two, they could do 20 and 20.
Okay. All right. No, I appreciate that, too.
Okay, anybody have any further questions? I, I would appreciate it if, you know, at the planning board meeting, you put the same thing on the agenda so we can clear these up once and for all because, you know, the misinformation, we need to all be on the same page, so.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, great.
Thank you, Mark.
Sure.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, next on the agenda is to discuss process for consideration for Taunton water connection applications. And the reason why this has been put on the agenda is that we recently had two requests for water connection. One was for 6,000 gallons and I can't remember what the other one was off the top of my head. But the problem was that, you know, one of those requests for a particular lot was a non-conforming, non-billable lot. So thanks to the zoning enforcement officer bringing that to our attention, that, you know, and then the other one was a 40B project, which has not submitted any site plan, you know, at this, at this point, or an application, you know, for that project. So I think we need to look at the process is that, you know, we need to have some documentation that proves that this project is moving forward because over the years, there's been approval for some of these connections and nothing happened, you know, on some of these projects. So I know that Ari, I guess got this from the city of, city of Taunton, you know, water application, but I still think, and, you know, I'm not sure really to, to vote on this yet, but this should come to the board of selectmen, you know, select board first. You know, first of all, if something gets submitted from a developer and they're going to do X, we need to have something that says what they're going to do. We're just not going to approve a water connection because they haven't applied yet. That makes no sense, you know, to do that. So we had two instances in the last month, you know, that that happened.
You count 310, that's four.
No, we had three instances, you know, that it happened. So we're going to look at this and refine this better because, you know, look at our water allocation, you know, we got, you know, one of the marijuana facilities that wants to go from 5,000 gallons a day to 50,000 gallons a day. That's a problem, you know, for us. So anyway, so I don't know if anybody has any comments on this form or wants to say anything.
Well, I did have a.
But we have to, we have to do something.
This is the town, this is the city's forum.
Yeah.
This is the city's forum.
So I think what we're talking about is what else are we going to ask for?
Right. And I think it'd be a good idea to have the town planner and the building inspector and maybe even the board of health, you know, look at this and say, hey, what are we doing? You know, because this is definitely a problem.
So I just have one question, Ari, where it says received Taunton Water Department specifications. Is that like if they've reached out to, so even if this is someone in Taunton applying for, you know?
Well, as I said, this is a Taunton forum.
Yeah, okay. So does that mean that they would have communicated with them? I'm just trying to even understand what that one piece means right there.
I would think that's a checkoff from, an internal checkoff for Taunton.
Okay.
To say, you know, has this applicant been given the specific, you know?
Anything.
Yeah, I, I, I've had a number of conversations, as I, as you all know, over the past several weeks or months with Taunton Water officials, mainly Michael Veruda, who's the superintendent there, and Craig Barter, who's an engineer, about their, about their process and what we can do. We've had some conversation, and there's a conversation taking place tomorrow, I believe, and with their top administration regarding how to handle the allocation process going forward. But beyond that, there's definitely a disconnect, a circle disconnect in terms of the, the information that we receive when we get an application and when we get that application in the process.
Yep.
I think it's viewed by applicants as the first thing to do, to determine whether they can move forward on the development of any kind, whether they can get the water. Now, that's not always true. Sometimes it is just a house and the house just, you know, wants to get water now, okay? You know?
Yeah, that's not a big.
Yeah, we've had a couple of those, yeah.
I think that, you know, a few gallons, a few gallons a day, that kind of thing. I think, I think probably we need to think about treating applications differently depending on what they're asking for.
Right.
And, you know, so if it's a, if it's an existing property, and we can find that out through our process with existing property, whether, you know, it's just a house, fine. But if it's a new development, such as the one you talked about as the chairman, the 40B, yeah, it's, it's really early for us to be growing them water access, we don't know what the project looks like or what the concept looks like. And, you know, 310 Kenneth Welch, we had a whole, you know, mess over that whole project showing what it is that they were asking for, and then not knowing what they're asking for, and asking for one number, asking for another number, asking for another number, and it was all over the place. I think we have a number now, but we basically, you know, had to force them down with an engineering study, and they still don't give us the full engineering study yet. Still, we still don't have it. I'm waiting for that, which is why the board has not seen that application yet to approve. So, you know, there's, I'd say a little more due diligence you can probably do on our end.
Right. I, I do believe, too, they even reached out to Taunton themselves first. I mean, they need to be going through our office first, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So, you know?
And in the case of 310 Kenneth Welch, for example, and this is, you know, this is something, we didn't know what was happening at the time, but they were given a special dispensation by having a separate connection off of the fire hazard. It was kind of really circumventing. It was kind of really circumventing the process.
Right.
So...
Would it be helpful if we have Ari put together just like a step-by-step process of, you know, what water allocation process looks like for Lakeville? You know, just to, you know, something...
You can absolutely do that, yeah.
I just think it would be really helpful.
Yeah, I think your connections now, too, Ari, because, you know, a lot of folks have changed at Taunton Water, too.
Yeah.
So some folks who had all the historic knowledge are gone, and there's new folks there trying to do the best they can, too. So, I mean, I think you've really strengthened our relationships with them, so maybe now's the perfect time to do something like that.
So we're in progress. I mean, what I'd like to see is the outcome of this conversation taking place inside their administration, because that will have implications for how we handle allocations.
Yeah.
I made it clear that we, that the town wants to reserve, no matter what they do, the town wants to reserve the right to approve.
Right. I agree with you on that, I still...
However they calculate an allocation, whatever, that's their own business. But, you know, however that turns out, will have an impact on the process that we go forward with.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda, anybody else have any questions on that?
No, I don't have any, thank you.
Update on special time meeting articles?
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, I will give you a quick run-through here. I know Mr. Chigginson, the board, wants me to go through every one I can, I'm just going to give you a quick overview, whatever you prefer me to do. At the moment, we're sitting at 22 articles, plus a road acceptance, which may or may not occur, depending on what is... Right now, there's title examination going on, inspection isn't going to take place until the end of the month, so we're not sure whether that's going to make it into November or not. But we're trying to accommodate as much as we can, but time, time's what it is.
With the 22 articles, including the...
Yeah.
Planning board articles?
Yeah.
Okay.
I counted that out.
All right, thank you.
In your handout, actually, so we have four financial articles, some prior bills, there's some budget amendments, facility manager, which we and the board discussed last week, turnout gear for fire, startup money for CPC, which we discussed. There's some free cash appropriations, firearms replacement, and then the schematic design projects we just talked about. There's the asset ops at school item. And by the way, just as a side, don't consider the order that these are presented in to be determinative recommendations whatsoever. The only thing they'd recommend philosophically is probably you put the petitions near the end, because we make sure people stay through, and then you put the financials at the beginning, because those are the have-to-dos. But besides that, you know, do what you got to do.
I have a question, I have a question on the asset ops at one, has our bond council looked at this after?
Yes, bond council's looked at it, it's been edited.
So it's all set?
Yeah, we have, we have some revisions.
Our bond council?
Yes, our bond council. Yes, our bond council.
Other regions or the MSBA?
No, no, our bond council.
Okay.
We just got back, and actually, Mr. Chairman, that came back yesterday. There's a few revisions to this, nothing substantial, just some changes in the way doors are frayed and things like that. We'll have the right language in the next version. The town clerk has requested article, which I believe you're all aware of, to convert that position to an appointed position later down, after this term is over. The CPC article that has been discussed a few times now is in here, and we can, you know, talk about that later on as well. The annual budget calendar is something that I've spoken with you about previously, to try to get the budget, try to get the budget processes laid on by law to reflect our current practice, and to be more reflective of the state budget process as well. There's an historic preservation restriction for Old Town Hall, that is to enable us to apply for MHC funding and other grants for historical preservation of that property. We looked at that last year, we're hoping to get a project to manage, to present enough funding for the roof replacement, and we realized that we needed that designation. The problem properties package, which I'm not going to belabor, because we did talk about that last week, I'm going to skip past those. Planning board, not all of the articles that I have in this handout I gave you went through, five out of, I think five out of six did. Once I went through with the Mullen role, planning board's requesting that. The modified setbacks and law coverage in the Business Industrials only requesting that. They did not recommend the modified section five to remove unprincipled structure, however they did recommend the industrials district zoning, that from signed application, it says a planning board member, and of course the VOD, we don't want you to know about. Then we have the two citizens' petitions, recall of elected officials, and expansion to a five-member board, and then finally, we may or may not have Ledgwood Drive. That's what we have.
And there was a possibility there was another citizen's petition for zoning. Do we know where that one is?
We received it, we received it, yeah. The, there may be on the, I just remembered, Mr. Chairman, what you mentioned, on the budget amendments, there may be one or two others that could come along. The only one I'm aware of right now, if we decide, if I get a recommendation from the police department to do a little more, for a little more money for security, we believe we have enough, I think it's late today, to do the Ted Williams camp.
COA.
COA, maybe let's do the library as well.
We want to do this library, yeah.
We're getting upstoked out.
Okay.
So we don't have enough, we'll ask for it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody got any questions? All set.
Great. And of course, next meeting, we'll have the full final vote. I'll try to get it to the board, we'll in advance, see if they have the time to look at it as well.
Okay, thanks. Number eight is to discuss a possible vote regarding the question from Lake Alliance to revise the one-day liquor license hours September 17th. Lake Alliance Club, as we, as we requested, they revised their hours for the one-day liquor license from 12 to 4 to 12 to 5 for their festival on September 17th. I entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved with discussion?
Yep.
We had talked earlier that there was a rain date for the 18th, so would that, would this license carry over to the 18th?
Tracy?
Yes, the license has already been voted for the 18th, so it's just the hours we changed.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So can we add that in, just in case it, just in the motion to add the rain date?
You want to add the rain date, Tracy?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
All right, just for the record. That's it.
I'm going to back it.
Discussion. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will abstain, I'm an Alliance Club member. Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, number nine is to discuss a possible vote to allocate HCA charitable contribution proceeds for Betty's Neck 20th anniversary celebration. It's unbelievable, it's been 20 years.
I know, right?
So, Laurie, do you want to explain this one to the board?
Sure, Mr. Chairman and member of the board, you have before you a memorandum from Nancy Yates, the APC manager, requesting $800 from the HCA charitable contribution account to help make the Betty's Neck celebration a success. This money may be used for event preparation, technical lunch components, entertainment, that kind of thing. There is currently a balance of $25,281 in that account, unavailable and unappropriated, so if the board is amenable, we'll be able to appropriate that and make the event a big success.
I entertain a motion to approve that.
The $800?
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve an additional $800, well, an $800 from the HCA charitable contribution fund to the Betty's Neck 20th year celebration. You want a second?
Rich got a second.
Yeah, we'll have a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'll second. Any discussion?
No, it's just, there's a lot of things planned. I think the date, we'll probably have it coming up, but it's in early October, early October.
October 9.
October 9. So it should be really nice. Like Rich said, I can't believe it's been 20 years.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'm going to abstain.
Tracy, I'll abstain. Can I tell you what it matters?
This, this grant application, do we just have to approve that, or the grant application for the upper money?
Yeah, so you approved it, actually.
Oh, we already approved it.
Back in June, you just signed it.
Just needed to sign, okay. Any new business? Any old business? We have an update on the Route 79 project.
So Lorraine asked for a quick update on that. So it is on schedule for FR 25, that's the construction year. I am working with town council and consulting data on title search, which is underway. There is land in Taunton that may, there may cause some issues. Their town, their city, sorry, their city solicitor has opined that there may be an Article 97 issued with some of the land in the Taunton space. That's hot off the press.
Wow.
So that's being debated.
It must be, must be down past the intersection of 79 and Presum Street.
That may require, that may require some, some work in the legislature if necessary. So I'm waiting for town, our town council to weigh in back on that, I'm trying to get you back on that thing, I wanted to let you guys know that was out there. So, but, you know, at this point, there's no reason to think that the project's going to be slowed in any major way.
Yeah, so clarification on when they talk about fiscal years with the federal government?
Yes, thank you, yeah.
It's different than our fiscal years?
Right.
So we're hoping that the projects will be funded, their fiscal years begin on October 1st, okay? So we're hoping that it'll be approved by then.
Yeah.
Okay. We got anything else? I don't think so. I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved, so moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.